All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the work session to order. We have our first reading of NC SBA Fall Policy Updates.
Thank you Chairman Etheridge. As the board can see, it's our first time this year with the Board Policy Updates. What the State School Boards Association does is they go through our policy handbook and they match up the policies that would have to be revised based on any changes in state law from this past summer. And these are the ones that have any type of changes in them whatsoever. You see the list at the bottom that goes more horizontally than vertically. Those are just technical corrections and so they don't really change the policy. It's maybe a legal reference gets added or a phrase gets put in, but nothing gets changed. You received an entire booklet here. And on the front you've got the organizational chart, but then you actually have all of the suggested revised policies in the back. But if I could keep you on the chart in the front, I'm going to tell you some of the policies that we're not going to recommend, that we revise or that we create at this time. We talked, most of them said consult your district's attorney and talk through, you know, whether your district needs this policy implemented at this time or approved at this time. And so I had that conversation. And so on this chart, it's like this, it's like a spreadsheet chart. Page one, if you go down and you see new policy thirty-two twenty-eight, use of personal technology to conduct school business. He recommended not putting in that optional policy right now, but he said that it would be a good idea, and I'd already said this, and so he just confirmed it would be a good idea to do some staff training about what constitutes a public record. And so for example, if I text Chairman Etheridge about a school situation and Chairman Etheridge texts me back, that text stream is a public record. And if we're doing those on our phone, then if something would come up about that situation, we would be bound to be able to produce that record. And so some of our teachers and some of our administrators might not have a full understanding of what constitutes a school record, and so trainings on that, he said that would cover it. This policy has a restriction in it that says you can't use your personal device for school business. And he said that's a little bit restrictive. If you guys haven't had an issue with that, or if you have used your personal devices for business, and I said we do and we have, he said then definitely the school records law training would suffice rather than putting in a brand new policy at this time. So you can put a little X by that one. That will not be in our recommended list. If you read it and you would like to say, we'd like to recommend it, put it on first read in December, we can do that.
Thirty-two twenty-eight. So we don't have a policy like that now?
No, no, it's a brand new suggested policy.
This would pertain possibly to anyone in the building that was using their personal device?
Yes.
For communication without school.
So if we put that in and we were not to use them, then you couldn't even contact us on our personal devices to let us know?
That's, well, what you would do is, what you would do is it says you can't do anything unless you have a BYOD, bring your own device, policy. So by putting this new policy in, then we'd have to create a second policy, partner policy with that. He said if you, if you don't think you need to go into the double policy detail, he goes, you just wait for now and not put it ahead this time. Okay, the second one is on my third page, and I hope we ran them off on all the same. It would be policy thirty-six twenty, extracurricular activities and student organizations. With this one, it's, it's got two parts. One, there is a gender identity piece with participation in extracurricular activities and student organizations. We do not have to change anything in our policy because there is a state high school athletic association gender identity committee that people have to go through to get approved and be eligible for participation. So he said the state covers that, you don't need a policy for that. The other piece, it was recommended that we don't have home schooled students breaking down our doors to participate in athletics, and I'm not aware that we do, that he said that you don't really need a policy right now if you don't have a big need to create that policy. So he said you can put a hold on that. The only thing on here, we would keep the policy in here because they have updates on references, which would be legal citations or whatever, and they said that was recommended. So this would go to that bottom list, that we would just revise it just for the references and the upgrades to the references, nothing in the actual policy at this time. Just so you know, other states have policies and state laws in place for home schooled students gain eligibility to participate in school district sports. Our state doesn't have a law, and so he said wait till the state acts on it first, and then you can put a board policy in to match that rather than blazing a trail yourselves. That's supposed to be the recommendation. New policy, this is just a reference, we're going to put it out here for safety and security and privacy reasons. Page five of sixteen. New policy forty-three thirty-four has to do with the use of unmanned aircraft, and they're talking about drones. If you don't know, our videographer may know this, that drones have gotten into the videotaping world and the news world and the photography world and even in real estate things, that's how they do the aerial photos of sites now. And this is the board actually becoming involved in setting the rules on when and where drones can be used on school property. And so the recommendation was we probably need to get to some place before we have some incident with drones. Drones are becoming more and more common and more and more populated here, and so it would just say, the board could say, when, well, they would direct me to review any applications to use a drone for whatever reason, and we would say yes or no based on the application.
You're talking about landing it and taking off and landing from school property? You're talking about controlling airspace? Like somebody's not on their property, you're talking about flying it?
Yeah, any use of it over the schools, yes.
Because they can be taking pictures of their students.
Right, that's the privacy piece.
I'm just curious as to how they want to enforce that. I was just...
Faculty members are supposed to report it if they see it.
Right.
I didn't know that you could access control airspace. I didn't use to me.
It says here, the board would then control the premises, how they use for launching, operating, or recovering drones. But it says here, you know, again, make sure that the board attorney has your policy reviewed, but this is coming from attorneys, and so this would cover all of the rights and responsibilities of the district and potentially the drone user.
It was scary one time, we had it happen at the high school. I'm like, what is that, a red light? It was a little scary.
Well, if you read over there on the notes, it's not really...
In neighborhoods, it's becoming an issue because people are flying over other people's houses and people are getting unnerved by it, and so I've seen some pretty intense Facebook posts and tweets and texts, people telling them they know who the owners of the drones are and they're telling them back off or else type of language. Well, we'll ensure that we're only enforcing things that we can enforce. All right, just an FYI, page seven. Hopefully not direct school activity.
I'm just curious how we're going to enforce that.
The license plate. Fifty, fifty-seventy on page seven, just an FYI. There's been a new records retention and disposition schedule adopted by the state, and we just have to make sure that we are in line with our policies and procedures for records. And so what will happen is I'll go through the new schedule with Ms. York, and we'll determine what we need to do differently than what we're doing now as far as records retention, and we'll let you guys know.
So that's fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. If you see in the notes, on the second page, it would be page eight, it says that the board actually has to sign like a resolution according to our attorney. That's an, that's an overkill. They said if you just adopt the policy, you're saying that you're going to follow the new schedule, and he said that would be documentation though. And the last one, I believe...
Wait a minute, so destruction of records.
Yes. I'll give you an example. A student went to the Curritown Schools back in the nineteen fifties and graduated, graduated, we'll give him the early sixties, he graduated, graduated in the early sixty. I believe the records retention on a student record is like fifty years, or something like that, and I think there's another provision that you might be able to destroy like the bulk of the record, but you have to maintain the transcript, I think, and that might be like seventy or seventy-five years or something like that. And so then somebody, you don't have too many requests for transcripts when somebody's in their nineties, and so that you might be able to destroy that. What's happening now is a lot of districts, and we're one of them, we're going to digitize record keeping, and so there's some definite rules in there about how you keep those electronic files as well.
To my point precisely. So like Google Classroom, because people mention that since I haven't done, I don't know too much about it. So I've been Googling to read about Google Classroom. And one of the things I came across was exactly that, how they store information, how they use it, depending on if you're using the core services or the additional services outside of the core services. And it was talked about, you know, if a parent wanted their child's records deleted or wiped or lacking, there was that terminology. And then there was some other jargon in there about how that they could opt out. So do we have a policy pertaining to those type of things?
What does opt out mean?
Meaning if they didn't want their students, their students' information, data, uploaded, recorded, period. That was on their legal disclaimer stuff I was reading. So I'm trying to find out, are we adhering to that? Did we notify? I'm sorry, I didn't jump all of this.
Yeah, I don't think it's in this policy. This is more a policy about records that we maintain, but I can have our data department check in on, making sure we're in compliance with the things we're using.
What I'm saying is because I didn't know anything about that. I got two kids in the school system, and maybe I missed something that came home or whatever, call or something, but I didn't know anything about it. So just one.
Do you know anything about those, those Google rights and responsibilities for users?
Film base is the system PowerSchool's part of film base, and that is where we maintain all of the state required documents that DPI accesses for their purposes and part of the program is secure setting, and that is like their organization, test scores from previous years, demographic data, emergency contacts, medical, you know, emergencies, custody notifications, all of those things are housed in that secure portal. Google Classroom is a separate thing that teachers have used in the classroom, that doesn't tie that system at all.
Right, and that's where I'm going with that information. So I'm more concerned because they have, according to their website or their information, they have like fifty thousand school districts worldwide subscribing to this thing, collecting all this, uploading all this information. And I'm curious as to how we alert the parents as to number one, it's happening, number two, if they want to participate, they want their information removed. There's a lot of different look like options for that in within that, and I don't know if we're...
Google Classroom is set up by the teacher and a very, it's not considered an actual learning management system like Handus is. So there is no personal identifying information in there other than the kid's name tied to their, whatever their classwork is or test scores or whatever else the teacher puts in there. And parents can be connected to that to see only their child's achievement or whatever they're doing in that system and receive weekly updates about my kid took these things in, these things are due, they haven't turned them in yet, and they get to see the parent portion of it. Not everybody is using it, but we can certainly look at a way to make sure the parents are notified upfront if the teacher is using Google Classroom as something that's district mandated and it's not a true learning management system.
It's not really.
It's not a true learning management system like Handus, which integrates with PowerSchool to push the grades and to power teacher private.
So we subscribe as a district or is it per the instructor? Okay, I'll use a little different subscription because I read into it and it talked about districts being subscribed and figuring that.
We are a Google district because it's free, we like free, but when I went to...
Be careful with free.
I do. When I went to every Google session I could in Philadelphia, the National AC Conference, I particularly went to the security one because I personally am also concerned about what I've seen in the media about it. And they went into great lengths about how they have the data separated on different servers. They, they tear the data apart, they send it to different sites, and then it has to be reconstructed on the other end. They, they set up scenarios where they take the site down and see if they're still functioning. So they're constantly working on making sure that they don't have any kind of breach and that we are, we understand that even our emails are encrypted before they're transmitted and then decrypted on the other end.
Yes ma'am, and also they talked about cookies and different services that if you went outside of the core services and used, for example, what you were subscribed on as a student, Google Maps and some others, then they would use that information in, outside of just storing it the way you mentioned. So all I'm trying to do is make sure that the parents understand that that's happening and then what their legal rights are. Short of that, we can all have our own opinion about if it's good or not, but I want to make sure that the parents understand that data's being collected and that sometimes when you're using some of these services, some of that data is being utilized, some of it's just being stored. I think it's important. They want to buy them a phone or let them use whatever at the house, that's one thing, but I'm not so sure they understand that what's happening. I did. Thank you.
The data that they're using, it doesn't have any personal information.
They can use certain information, just like the census bureau, okay? And they can use that way beyond my probably scope of thinking. And that's how, when you're on Facebook or you're on Google or you're on something, and you could even be talking about something, your phone could pick it up, and next thing you know, they're trying to sell me what I was just talking to somebody on the phone about, okay? My business, happens all the time. You know, I could search for a certain light, bam, I got five companies trying to sell me the same light, you know?
But when you were on with your son and going over his assignment, did you have to opt out before you could move forward?
I didn't get on it with my son, well, my one son's already on it, and he's doing his homework on it, and I didn't even realize it. And then after our conversations last time about not having what I felt resources, and then there was discussion mentioned about Google Classroom and another North Carolina site, I didn't even research that one yet, but particularly the Google Classroom in the middle schools and the high schools. So then I said, okay, well, what the heck is this? So let me go start figuring it out because I don't know anything about it. So the more I read about it, the more I realized that parents had legal rights that they might want to be informed about, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good idea, at least to disclose that to the parents and let them make that decision whether they opt in or out.
Yes ma'am, and I wasn't saying that they want to or they don't want to, but I think it puts us in a situation that if you don't inform them, kind of like a disclaimer like you just mentioned, then we are at risk for that aspect possibly, I'm not saying we are, but also if somebody wanted their data removed from that, you could have that done, so for all those reasons.
Okay.
Okay, the other one we just highlighted on here would be page twelve of sixteen, new policy. It is optional, but it's recommended that boards take a position one way or another, seventy-three sixty, crowdfunding on behalf of the school system. And what that means is said teacher, you know, goes out for crowdfunding to purchase some...
Flexible seating.
Extensive addition to the classroom, something, and they put it out there, even though they're going for that one classroom, if they're buying seating or a special fancy computer above and beyond the computers that we already provide, that becomes school district property. And so there's been more and more of a call for districts to track that money like we do fundraiser money. And so instead of the money and crowdfunding going to the teacher directly, the crowdfunding money comes to finance, and then the teacher would then just write a purchase order to finance for his or her money, and then they would draw it off of there. But as it shows up with this policy, it shows up for Mrs. Smith, and so it gets put in an account just for Mrs. Smith. So the other teachers go like, hey, Mrs. Smith just did a fundraiser. They can't write a purchase order off that account if she did all the work. And so there have been some claims and allegations that somebody does crowdfunding, the piece for their classroom doesn't cost as much as, as what they were successful in getting in crowdfunding, then they take the rest of their crowdfunding money and they go do something fun, you know, and the money never makes it into the classroom. So they want some tracking and some documentation of the money, you know, people will donate to things that help kids, and so they just want to make sure the money goes to that classroom.
So this is like for the GoFundMe sites?
Yes.
Because I saw several of those at the beginning of this school year on Facebook from their teachers.
Right. We wouldn't do retroactive, it would be from whenever you approve this policy going forward, but it says here, the recommendation is set a policy if you're okay with it, set a policy if you want to prohibit it. I don't think anybody wants to prohibit it because it's another source of financial resources, and so it just has to be some, you know, checks and balances through the, to the data managers or at the buildings and then through the finance office, then we have a record, you know, of what's coming into the district.
How would this play into, like we did championship rings last year, and went on social media and said we need sixteen people to give us a hundred and fifty dollars to buy the volleyball team a ring?
If that was done through a booster club?
Nope, it wasn't done through a booster club.
If it was done through a staff member or a coach?
Nope.
No, parent.
We have no control of that.
Okay.
It would have to be a staff member triggering it. PTAs aren't involved in this, booster clubs aren't involved in this, but if a teacher or administrator or a teacher as a staff member triggers the request, then it has to be monitored, under this policy, be monitored by the finance department.
I just want to make sure we don't limit their parents. Like sometimes I see parents asking for donations to do a reel for a team or something, and they still do that?
I can't tell parents what to do. Someone will tell me what to do, but I can't, I can't, I can't tell parents what to do. It's not fair. But yeah, no, this is just staff, staff creating one.
Their staff asking for money for their classrooms.
Yeah, or a field trip or any of those types of things. And I think, didn't band uniforms or instruments or something, wasn't there a GoFundMe for some band activity one time, a couple of years ago? I thought Mr. Burgess was out there doing something, GoFundMe one time.
I think he did Donors Choose.
Yeah, Donors Choose.
Like all of our teachers do Donors Choose.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah, that's maybe the largest.
Whatever, it's the same thing, yeah, any of those. You don't just say just this one.
I think it was Donors Choose, I saw this year, several teachers.
Yeah, it's any of those online fundraising things. People are just making allegations against teachers or school districts wanting to know where the funds went.
And I wonder if our teachers do have, that if they, so in other words, if their teachers solicit the funds for a current county classroom, if the teacher leaves and goes to Virginia, those materials are supposed to stay here?
If they were solicited for the Curritown County Classroom, it would make sense.
Essentially, in the Donors Choose material, when you sign up, you actually have to send a letter home to the parents saying that you're doing this, and they pay the bit at that the material you get from your classroom, you never get any money. You ask for, you know, breakout boxes or whatever, test kits, and it costs this much money, and people give to the site, and then when the amount is reached, you get...
The materials.
The materials delivered to the school. You don't actually touch any of the money.
Fantastic.
Which one's that on?
Donors Choose.
My mind went back to the old days of scholastic book order, where my desk drawer was filled with checks made out to me in cash, and then I wrote a check out of my personal account and just pocketed all that money.
I did that too.
Yeah, we don't want to go back there.
I don't think we have rocks.
After writing the check to the company out of my account, I replaced my account with the other people's money.
Gets a good deposit the same day, huh?
Yeah.
All right, again, the rest of them, anything that's listed as recommended, highly recommended or required, it'll be on our recommended list, but the ones that I told you that the attorney said not at this time, those will not be on our final recommended list.
Could you talk a little bit about twenty-three hundred C?
I don't have a policy in front of me, but there are different types of meetings. And an emergency meeting, you have to make sure that you meet the definition of an emergency so boards can't overuse that designation just to call a meeting without proper notification and announcements ahead of time.
Well, the point that was underlined is and cannot be delayed until forty-eight hours notice is provided. So, I mean, I guess I was wondering if we had a special meeting?
No, no, an emergency meeting, that's what I'm saying, a regular meeting, close session, a special meeting, an emergency meeting would be all different types of meetings.
So if we had an emergency meeting scheduled for tomorrow, this is, this is, and cannot be delayed until forty hours notice is provided, so then if we didn't need it or we needed to change it, if we couldn't change it, it was kind of confusing.
I'll have to call them, that one wasn't listed as a major one to worry about, so I didn't review that, sorry. So calling emergency meeting was determined that the meeting is necessary, it cannot be delayed.
It was just kind of confusing with it cannot be delayed.
So you don't get noticed to have it through emergency, but if you want to delay it, what you're saying, I think, is you got to give them forty-eight hours notice.
Yeah, right, well, no, well, actually, what I think what this means is if it's something that can be delayed, then you might be coming out of the definition of an emergency meeting. So then you go under the rules for a special meeting, and you have to give forty-eight hours notice for the special meeting. Because that's what they said, they refer you to section D, because now the purpose of your meeting has changed, and how big of an emergency can it be if you say, we're meeting at breakfast tomorrow, no, we don't have to meet until Saturday, you know, then it's not an emergency anymore, so now it's a special meeting.
Okay.
Again, the rest of, there will be more recommended, I didn't do everyone who's recommended, but these are the ones that are either new or have some special tweaks to them that I wanted the board to know about. The rest of them are more traditional type of upgrades where they're just matching state law and then you just follow suit to match up the state law.
Okay, all right, moving right along to school performance.
Board has already seen this chart, I just wanted to put it up there for everybody else's viewing pleasure, and I know you can't read all the numbers and the letters and so forth. And I know you can't read all the numbers and the letters and so forth, because there's a lot up there on the spreadsheet. But green is the color you want. Green means that you either maintained or you've increased in that particular area. And in the second column and then the second and the fourth column to the right of the grade bar, the more green you see there, the better you are, because you have math and reading scores to the right of the grade bar. And then you have the total building score to the left of the grade bar. So we have nine of ten in green in the growth status at the building levels. That's as high as this district has been in the new testing cycle that started back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And in the last three years, the one building that didn't meet growth last year has met growth the other two years. And so they're not foreign to meeting growth. So we are that close to all ten buildings meeting growth or exceeding growth and moving forward. You see, they call it light orange, it looks more tan in the, in the report. Those marks were ones that came up from a suggestion last year that if the grades stayed the same, but the numerical value, the numerical score next to it dropped, then we would put those in a different color. And so that's what those are. So those are maintenance of grades, but the actual performance number changed, you know, in decline. And so that's why those are tan. So if you take all the green and all the tan, you actually get fifty-some items out of sixty-eight. And so that's a very high percentage that's in the color codes that we want them to be in. And then the targets for improvement, you know, again, if folks are in the B range or the A range for grades, we're always targeting that anyway. But then you actually go to the white blocks for, you know, your improvement targets for individual buildings. You see one double block down there at the bottom in kind of a carnation or a red? We are in the middle of, I guess we'll call it a new calculation. The math rules, not only did the test change, but the scoring rules changed. And we are debating with DPI right now whether or not we even have the right numbers. And so once we get that, then we have to determine whether or not they're actually going to merge the math one scores and the math three scores into one math score, or if they're going to leave them separate. And so I'll show you the high school and then you can, you can roll it over to JPNA. At the high school, the first number in what looks like a fraction are the math one scores. And the second number would be the math three scores. To the right of that, you have the math one score that didn't change, but then look at the changed number in the math three score. That's why this is such a big concern for us. If they're listing that our math three score is thirty-nine and a half percent, when we're listing it as being ninety-four and a half percent, we've got some discussing to do, because those numbers aren't close. And what it has to do with, it has to do with the population that they're counting. The only math three scores that are supposed to count are students that took math one in middle school. Because then their math one high school accountability score isn't there. So then the state designated math three to be the substitute for those students that took math one in the middle school. We believe that they counted too many students. And the end number, if you will, the number of students in the sample is wrong. Actually at both schools, but really wrong at the high school. You see at NAP, the number changed from ninety to a hundred, you know, so there's a little bit of a change there. But we got the state yesterday up to eighty. And if that's where we end up, we'll take it. Eighty's a lot better than thirty-nine, and so.
So we knew, we kind of knew this was going to happen. When the legislation came out, they talked about now teaching, so math one scores now get banked in the middle school for anybody that takes it in the middle school. So they stopped making the eighth graders who are enrolled in math one take those, the eighth grade math assessment and the math one. They're only taking the math one, that's what counts in the middle school accountability model. So we knew that was going to happen. So what they did is said, we're going to create now a new EOC, math three EOC for high school. And any kid who took math one in middle school, who won't take it in high school, which is typically how we get measured in high school, is math one scores. We'll give them the math three test along with every other kid that's enrolled in math three, but we're only going to tease out those math three scores of the kids that took it in middle school and count those. Well, as we sat backing up that legislation, I kept thinking, yeah, right, like who's going to tease out this information? How's this really all going to work? So as we got the numbers back, I'm like, something doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. If we're only counting those kids who took math one in middle school, who enrolled as math three as a freshman, their scores or something, whatever it was, those are your highest flying kids. So something didn't add up to me when I saw the numbers. If they're your highest flying kids, I'm like, we just, it doesn't make sense.
Forty percent pass rate if you had.
We need to get something on the phone, because are they counting everybody in math three? Or are they counting only the ones that the business rule said they were going to count when they created this new policy? So I don't know.
Well, I wonder how many more districts are having the same problem, but that haven't noticed that it's, yeah.
Right. Yeah, well, and again, we, we did, our double check was NAP. And NAP's number was a lot closer, but it still wasn't exactly the same. And so we're in conversations about the data that the state is using and the data that we think they should be using. And they're getting ready at the end of this week or beginning of next week to release the report cards on their state website. And it's a website where it's the whole state of North Carolina and you can click on each county. And right now, the number on there is thirty-nine and that's the wrong number. And so we need to, we need to get it corrected. And we had the lady yesterday in the state said, after recalculating, we see eighty. Well, when I go on the state's website, the thirty-nine is still there. So, you know, I don't know, because they're still in discussion with us, they haven't upgraded it and updated the information, but we're pushing. Excuse me, for the ninety-four to be on that number. So that's why it's in pink. We don't have final data on the math yet. We still don't know. It appears that they're going to leave the math one and the math three scores separate, because that's the way the state's website is presenting it right now. So we won't get one single math score at the high school like we typically did. So that's how much it's changed at the, at the scoring level.
All right.
Okay.
Um, budget resolution?
Oh, no, C.
Oh, C, I'm sorry.
C, yeah.
School improvement plans, district?
Right. The, the chart up there leads us into, this is one piece of data that we look at when we're developing the individual, ten school improvement plans for the year. Each year, school improvement teams are selected to create a school improvement plan for their building. It gets approved by the staffs at each of the building. Then they're submitted up here for the board to review and then to approve and make them official. And so over the weekend, I know it would have been a lot of weekend reading, you know, over the week if you had it, but you've got all a hundred and some pages worth of the tenant school improvement plans, you know, online. And we have the principals here, or assistant principals here to answer any questions that people may have about the school improvement plans.
They put a lot of work in, a lot of school improvement teams, I know it's been many hours.
It's definitely due.
Anyone have any comments?
And for the board's information, there's a recommendation from the state and we put this into practice for the last three years. They, they recommend a central office liaison be on each school's school improvement team. And so we have academic cabinet members sitting in on each building's school improvement process. That if they have a question about, you know, can we get extra funding for this? Or would this be something that the district will be okay with? Then they can give preliminary approval right to the school improvement team as they're working through the process.
How does a improvement team want to do this improvement? You know, the time that they need to start, I mean, do they do that like on workdays?
After school.
What they have to, they have to, they have to meet once a month. And so they meet, most, most of them are after school or all the math.
After school.
No, we, we meet your school day.
School day.
Before school.
Before school, because you start so late.
Okay.
Yeah, when you go.
Typically starting at half.
At a time. No more than forty-five minutes for us.
I appreciate all the hard work I did go through them and I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. And it's very obvious that you're working hard to improve and I appreciate it.
I reviewed them this way. Great job.
For what it's like to form one.
Okay, I have a couple of comments on them. I read through them, most of them are pretty general on improving the entire school, such as all classroom teachers will utilize Planbook dot com. Non-homeroom, homeroom teachers will have the option to use a different format, let's write lesson plans on student needs. So they were fairly general, yet I could see improvement, you know, at the school. What I'm more concerned with are the school's plans for improving student achievement. That, there were no specific plans in any of them, because it wasn't asked for. But yet that should be one of the main concerns of a school. You know, and if you have quality schools, which we do, the principal is a true instructional leader and will go about setting out to improve student achievement. With that being said, do you have the copies of that data? Okay, could you give one to each board member, Mark?
Is this something not in their packet?
Yes. This is information that I gleaned that I'm going to use right now.
In, in the future, I'd like to be aware of it.
Well, while we're waiting on that, I'd have to agree with Dr. Dobney that I'd like to see specifically, not, you know, to the actual letter, but I think, I think if they have ideas or they need certain things, or they need things to be slightly different, maybe it wouldn't be so, because I've read through a lot of that myself. And some of it seemed not be, just seemed kind of like standardized form. I'd say it's all of it was, but what I mean is just similar things to specific locations that were going to make adjustments. That's kind of relative, some of the stuff seemed very similar from one campus to the another. And I couldn't really gauge what was exactly meaning. With things like that, that we could give, I think we could be very helpful.
Okay, did Matt and Renee give one? I selected an elementary and a high school. I'll start with Shawboro and Greta. After you saw your reading, math and science scores, tell me what your thought processing was. What type of data did you inspect and what do you have in place now to try to make sure that those scores will improve?
Sure. Looking at that chart, it's hard to swallow. It is, and so a lot of the things that we put in place last year, we had our instructional coaches come and they did standards alignment sessions and PLCs once a week. To be completely honest, that was met with resistance from quite a few of our teachers. We worked through that process. I've had individual conversations with a lot of staff members and we're on the right track. We've done different things. We, I modified our master schedule in order to give us longer math blocks. We were having about a seven to five minute math block in the upper grades. We now have a ninety minute math block that doesn't include our richer time, which is additional fifty minutes, where they get small groups and they get to work on skills, kind of closing those gaps. We have new resources that have been provided by the county, which have been fantastic. Dream Box is one of the ones that I've worked closely with Dr. Luke's on for the county and our teachers seem to love it. We just had a meeting where we looked at data from that, just showing the amount of usage. And then the piece that I really appreciated was the seating teachers login, because there was a data piece that shows not only are the kids using the program, but the teachers are logging in to see and to look at the data pieces and to see where their kids are struggling. And that's not a program where they set a target of what they're working on. It's a program where they, it's used to fill gaps of what they've missed. So if you have a fifth grader on Dream Box, they might be working on a second grade skill because they haven't moved beyond that. We had an injury last year as well in fourth grade with one of our staff members that put her out for predominantly most of the year. We had a long-term sub that taught our entire fourth grade math last year. I don't, I don't point fingers at any one person. I don't think that it's any one person's fault. I think that we, we know the why of what happened and we have put places and things, we made those in places to fix it. And so I think extended math blocks, extended language arts blocks, we have a focus for writing, we have a focus for our standards. And I think as we, you know, I think most of my colleagues will tell you that I'm very passionate about my school and if anyone wants that school to succeed, it's me. I think my teachers will tell you that I'm comfortable having difficult conversations that need to be had. However, I do have their back and I support them one hundred percent. And we have growth conversations. And I put in, I know our school improvement plans through the program that we use, some of it is a little standard of what you select. That's because you see some of the same things on all of them, because you go through a bunch of standards and you select specific indicators. But if you want to see the individual piece, read the actions, because that is what each school has to type in that we're doing to improve our school. With mine, you will notice that we, instead of adding more indicators, we have taken it and we develop it each year. And so I went back and I dated. And so you can see where it might say sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and so on, of what we're doing to grow those indicators. We've also extensively worked through the MTSS process. We've grown that from the grounds up. That process is working with those kids who are high need students and are struggling. And we've grown that into something that is absolutely phenomenal. And I would invite you to come see it, because our teachers are doing good things for kids. We have a very high need population within our ECE department in my building and I work closely with a lot of those families. Some of those children may never meet proficiency on any EOG, but I can guarantee you that those parents will tell you that we are meeting their child's needs.
I know you said that you went through standards alignment. Did you match that up with a pacing guide and make sure that those standards were going to be taught during the school year?
So our instructional coaches, they created a standards alignment, professional development, so once a week. And I sat through all of them, I sat through it three times a day, once a week, because I found it that important that I was in the room with the teachers, with the instructional coach while they're going through this. They need to see that, I find it important as well. And so they looked at the standards. What they did was they had teachers take the standards and break them apart, figure out what is the standard asking for? What is it really asking you to teach? Because our teachers teach their heart out. But if you teach, the wall is gray, the wall is gray, the wall is gray, and the question is what color is the floor, they're going to fail. And so it's really making sure that our teachers are teaching the right things. It also looked at EOGs and DOK levels to determine how many questions came from each type of standard. So then they, again, aligned it to pacing, so they could see, are we, should we be spending five weeks on this standard? Or should we be spending two weeks on this standard? So they could kind of match that to EOGs to see that we get one, get through all the standards we need to teach, but also that we're teaching the ones that have the biggest impact, the longest, or the ones that have the most detail. Because there are standards that you hit multiple times in a year. And so just trying to make sure. It was, it was, it's a hard pill to swallow sometimes when, as a teacher, if someone comes in and says you need to do this differently. Because teachers pour their heart into what they do. And so they was met with some resistance, we overcame that. We're still doing that work now. My teachers are unwrapping their standards, I expect that they're teaching them. And we have conversations about them constantly. I put in my own professional development plan, because I create one too. I, I helped write the professional development plan for all of my staff. They reviewed it, they agreed to it, they put it in as their, their plans. And it all includes growth of our students. We may not be proficient on the test. We may not be proficient on the test to where we want to be yet. Not meeting growth is not acceptable for me. It's not. And we are doing everything we can to, to fix that and to meet that. And I put in my own professional development plan when I sat with Mr. Stefanic and Dr. Luce. And we looked at it and they said, you understand what you're putting in this plan and what you're saying. I absolutely understand what I'm putting. I'm putting that, I'm, I'm writing in this plan my expectations for my building, for myself. And a lot of it, you know, it, it's a, if it doesn't make it, then I didn't make growth on that and I didn't meet that goal. And I'm okay with that. I'm okay with putting myself at that level because I am passionate about what I do.
One last question. How much did you personally observe in the areas of concern before the scores came out and then after the scores came out?
Can you clarify? I'm not sure I understand.
I don't know what percent of your teachers you observed, but if you observed and saw that there may be a problem coming up?
I observe every single teacher in my building. So the way that I divide observations between myself and my sister principal is that I don't think, because the traditional method of I take half, you take half, that's great. But then you only see half your staff teaching all year. That's not okay. So we divide it where I do the first round, I do half. My AP does the other half. Second round, we switch. And I do that half, she does the half I did. Third round, we switch back. We collaborate on summatives. But more importantly, it's the stuff you see when you do walkthroughs. It's the unannounced pop-ins that you go in just to see what kids are working on. I enjoy going into classrooms. It's the best part of our job is to be able to go into a classroom. That's another piece of my professional development plan is to be able to get in there even more. Because you know what's happening in your building when you're in the classroom. And if I see something that's a concern, I absolutely will address it. I think you could talk to any teacher in my building and they will, if they're honest with you, they'll tell you that we've had conversations by looking at E V O S. We've looked at our data. We've looked at each individual teacher's growth, where's their areas of strength? Are they doing well with our middle of the road kids? Are they struggling with our AIG? Are they struggling with our E C kids? And we talk about ways to fix that. You know, I came from a background of being an instructional coach. I think it's a huge important factor. And so I will continue to make changes. I will continue to, you know, do whatever I can. With my fifth grade math, which are the fourth graders where we struggled in math, they now have not only a ninety minute core math block, they get a double dose of math. I organize our schedule. We only have three teachers in that grade level. I organize our schedule. So we have a math teacher, a language arts, social studies teacher, and a science math teacher. So they go to math for their ninety minutes. They go to language arts for their ninety minutes. And I incorporated social studies with that because you can tie social studies so much with language arts, if, you know, with planning purposes. And then when they go to science, they don't need as long of a block for that. So she does part science and then she does math remediation, math intervention. So that teacher works with the core math teacher to look at needs and she pulls math groups. That's the other thing that I have made an adamant mandatory thing is that you're teaching in small group. Whole group lessons, mini lessons, that's a great thing to introduce something. But the kid who's quiet, who's lost and doesn't understand it, they're going to sit in the back. They're not going to raise their hand because they're shy, or they just, they know they don't get it and they're embarrassed. And they're not going to ask a question. You're not going to know if they understand it because you've got the three that always raise their hand and answer the questions in the front. You think everybody's got it. Everyone understand? They all go, hmm hmm, and then you move on. It's not, it's not okay to not meet the needs of those kids. And so, you know, all of my teachers are doing math rounds on the daily five schedule and reading rounds on the daily five schedule. We use the Jen Richardson small group instruction. I'm working with our instructional coaches this year to bring in more professional development. We have it going after school. We have it during PLCs. You know, I, I just think that we, we're moving in the right direction. We have all the right things in place to get back to where we were.
Is this year three for your group?
Year four.
Year four starting?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your input and I'm glad to hear that you expanded your math time and language arts time. We talked about that earlier, believe it or not. Okay, Brian, in your school improvement plan, it says CCHS will increase grade level proficiency in all E O C areas by three to five percent each year. And then if you look at your student achievement, you know, biology, English II, math, and graduation rate, when you saw that coming, your thought processing?
Disappointed. That's certainly not what we aspire to, much like Greta has mentioned. Our folks are taking very, very close looks at alignment of the teach, the taught curriculum and the tested curriculum, using pacing guides to make sure that they're covering adequately everything that'll be embraced on the test. We have done a whole lot of consideration in the schedule, some of which has been rendered impossible due to a lack of staffing with double blocking, English and math. I've had some experience with that in the past where over time there have been extraordinary gains when we give kids more time, particularly when it comes to literacy and numerous.
Yeah, it's the same thing we did a number of years ago.
Yes, sir.
Double block math and English.
And I'm a firm believer in that. We get worked into the schedule, any number of things, a literacy block primarily, tending to ACT prep. That unfortunately went by the wayside. I'll explain more about that in just a moment. We've tried vigorously to secure, particularly in the language arts areas, teachers who have some depth of knowledge in the very esoteric practice of reading, would be the first to admit that that has not been terribly successful. We are woefully, and there's nothing about Currituck that is unique in this regard. We are sorely lacking in the secondary level with reading teachers, folks who can bring to the table credentials with a masters in reading. Sometimes I think even myself included grossly underestimate just how, again, esoteric those skills are. Just seeks to explain, not excuse. We have an English vacancy today that has persisted since the beginning of school. And we've been unable to fill it. We have a math position. We had to replace two math teachers. One comes to us with, and thanks to the good work of Ann Mack, and we got him credentialed. But he is on as provisionable a license as he possibly could be. We have an instructional coaching model where we have made into, or built into our master schedule, a math and a literacy teacher who, master teacher can work on an ad hoc basis, one-on-one with new teachers who need that type of individual attention and tutelage. In biology, we saw attrition, and Renee could help me with this, just prior to my arrival, of at least one that I know of, bona fide, ironclad certified biology teacher. That position vacancy was filled by calling on a teacher who had not taught the discipline in probably a half a decade. We're working to secure funding to continue to get that particular individual some professional development. It's hard getting back on that. That trained after being off for some time. But like Greta said, the, these folks are, they're crestfallen when they don't meet the standard. They don't meet expectations. They don't meet the goals. And maybe those were too ambitious when I came in in August of last year. But they're receptive to professional development, to instructional coaching, to being created with the schedule. So we, we continue to look at a lot of things. I have to report that we have made a recommendation for anyone. So hopefully in very, very short order, that dear lady can begin and look at what we've done and the way of drilling down the data on student performance by question. Because as you all know, when I see, you know, language arts fifty-nine, what does that mean? It means a whole lot more when I can drill down and find in five, six, eight, ten sub areas where the deficiencies are. And we can, you know, we can, we can put a scope on that and attend to that more, more directly. But, but, but I have to say, again, explain, not excuse, staffing continues to be a, 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 a big, big challenge. And in areas like English where I never saw a, a lack of available candidates, we're starting to see that now. And like I say, in, in math and biology, we had a teacher leave mid-year. That certainly didn't help our, our cause when it came to science scores, but those are some of the things that we're trying, yes.
Dr. Mackey, these scores that Dr. Doudney has put on here, the math, these are the ones you're questioning, Mark?
Yes, yeah, that's, I put a square around it. Those are the pink ones up there on the, on the chart. We're still trying to figure out exactly what the new math scores are going to be.
How, how does it, how do our scores at the high school with math play into what we're allowing at the middle school with them taking the higher level maths before they go to the high school?
Well, they're your high flying students. So those are simply your students that score level fours and fives regardless when they take the test. So I don't know that that has the impact on it. It's our, it's, what happens though is all those scores get banked down there. Where typically their high school scores.
How long have we been allowing that to happen?
Well, since I was in middle school, we let Algebra One happen. I mean, I took Algebra One A and Part A and Part B when I was a student here in middle school. And that was the first level course to go into high school. So I mean, I think that that process has been going on for a long. And now state legislature is going to mandate that, that every middle school seventh grade student who scores a level five be enrolled in Math One at the middle school level. So there's still going to be that process. We're going to have to abide by that policy that says you have to offer that advanced course.
Math One?
Math One.
Is that all we offer?
No, we offer Math One and Math Two.
And what is their reasoning in offering Math Two?
I guess for that group of high flying, I came in on the tail end of I think it's more of what?
I'll answer it. That came up when I was at the middle school. Question came from the board at that time regarding what are we doing for our brightest, the bright kids? At that point, we took our data. There is a very small percentage number of kids that would qualify for that class. They're pretty much kids that are ninety-seven percent title students and above. And they access Math Two. I believe the first group of those kids are sophomores at the high school now. And I believe there was maybe eight. Last year, there were six at Currituck Middle and I think there were eleven at Mayock Middle School. So a really finite group of kids that they were offered the option. It was not a parent opt-in. It was not a call. Because there, there's a certain level of ability. So it was really, it also was an answer to the gifted, how are we going to serve our gifted children at the middle school level? Because we no longer provide direct services. And so it is a, that's really the gifted offering, is to offer them the math at the highest level that it appeared that they could achieve that.
Yeah, the students are ready to take it. You know, let them take it because.
Otherwise, they'd just be, they'd just be sitting there.
Even back when I was superintendent, we taught Algebra One and Geometry at the middle school level.
Again, it's a small group and that was our, in junior year, here is gifted. And that was part of the gifted plan for the, for the district is service. We don't, we don't have gifted teachers at the middle school level. We don't provide pull-out services or anything that looked like it does currently at the elementary level. So the gifted program or the honors selection. Honors classes and then the, the, the math that is tiered.
It doesn't regard the student achievement at the higher levels either, because even when we taught geometry at the middle school level, what was it, two thousand, two thousand and one, we had the highest geometry test scores in the entire state, even above Chapel Hill. So it shows that, you know, when you have the right quality teacher teaching, they can still get the information out of the students.
I see us trying to increase the rigor at the high school. And we have a student board member who was one of our first inductees into our new chapter. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
So just to start off, my freshman year when Ms. Dowdy was our principal, that was a lot of when I was taking your general, like, pre-ret courses where you're getting your English and American. Now that I'm in my junior year, I've basically finished all my required high school and I'm going into the AP. Dr. Mackey, since he's come in, has put in the AP Capstone program and allowed all these different honor society to come in. So last night, I was inducted into the National English Honor Society, which is something that's really good. Because like at the high school, we have honors classes and we have your academic classes. And to be quite honest with you, even though you have a different GPA and it's, it's still the same material because the test at the end of the year is almost identical. So it's really not providing that extra level of rigor even for your high students, even if they are in the honors classes, just because it is the same material. You're just going through it a little bit different pace. And like in chemistry, for example, you do more labs in the academic students. But other than that, you're basically seeing the same thing. So when this year, I was super excited when we are starting to implement more of the AP programs and everything like that because colleges really like to see that. So I think at the high school, we're definitely making efforts to really help the higher level students just because when we run out of classes to take, what are, what are we supposed to do? Because at the end of the day, our GPA is still being looked at. So when we run out of classes, what, what do we take? You know, like, there's nothing to take. So it, I think with our staff over, our administrative staff over the year, we definitely need efforts to really improve not only your high flying students, even the lower students, they're getting that extra support and everything like that with power time. The, like, now that we have half days every Friday, you can stay from twelve thirty to three thirty, whenever you need to. If you have your own car, leave at the bus at three thirty if you need extra help. So I think we're really making efforts to improve our student, like, growth, if that makes sense.
Okay, Brian, last question, same one I asked Greta. What percent of your faculty do you observe that were in the areas of concern?
The majority, yes, sir. We, we actually have put in a model at the high school where we seek to triangulate that there's not just a group of teachers seen just by one administrator, but each teacher will be seen hopefully by all four administrators during the course of the year. I think that combats some of the notion that may come about when those different conversations occur, that it's personal. But when you're able to corroborate that, you know, one AP is saying the same thing as the principal, I think it's a little bit harder to push back on that type of data because I think that becomes more factual than feeling. I never want to be too presumptuous, but, but going to probably bring some things and may need, may need the help of you as a body. Ms. Dowdy and I have spoken at some length about thinking outside of the box. What about at the high school level and Title One model? Where there will be a reading specialist who will be assigned to each secondary school. Again, if a child doesn't read well, every test is a reading test. It's all downhill. I mean, as you can teach me lessons on with your vast experience, I mean, that, that's foundational. And in a, in a past life where I was called upon to pull a school out of a poor performance and in one year got them accredited, it was the double blocking and having a bona fide reading specialist that could work with the kids who, who needed it the most. May, may also come to you with some pretty unorthodox thinking. When we look at gaps and we talk about serving the, the, you're a tough apple, the tail of a car, kids want to read up on it. What we're doing for the upper levels, again, Capstone, the Capstone diploma will be equivalent, they say in prestige, to an IB diploma. I'm proud of that. One of only fifteen hundred schools in America. But what are we doing with the kids that had disengaged? And we have got to do something, again, with, with, with us at the high school, because you can probably teach me lessons on, you know this already. Got a contingent of Caucasian males who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And even among the academic purists, again, who loves Hamlet and loves the Shakespearean sonnet and that kind of thing, they're not buying in. They, 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 they are not into that. They can tell you coming into the ninth or tenth grade that I want to earn a credential. I want to learn to be a welder. And I think that, again, the powers that be in Raleigh, the powers that be in every state capital in this country, I think it's incumbent upon me as, as an instructional leader, as a principal, we have just got to look at some creative ways to modify that curriculum. And I don't know if you call it technical English, you know, I'm not smart enough to figure it all of that out. But give them a, a brand of instruction that covers the requisite skill development, shall we say, in literacy, but puts it in some context that they can appreciate.
Well, until you find a, an alternative, that one size fits all diploma.
Amen.
It's going to be, you know, crazy. Have you met with some resistance too on trying to get some of the faculty to change, teach the state? Okay.
Yes.
You said yes?
Hit it here to your slide.
And took the fifth. That kind of goes into some of the discussion we had earlier.
Well, I think that's why you asked that question.
Well, I know. Well, what I'm saying is, Dr. Doudney. That's where I give my answer.
Dr. Doudney, did you have this drawn up for the other schools as well or just these two?
No, just those two.
And the reason for that?
Because we're out of time already. Didn't have enough time to spend on the other school. Plus the other principals would hear exactly my concerns. And hopefully they would pick up from that and come up with, you know, plans to improve the student achievement at their school. But these were the two schools with the most needs.
May I add something really quickly? When it comes to like the curriculum and anything like that and like the test scores, like, it's not only affecting like the administrators and school staff and the school board and everything, but like, it also kind of hurts the students in a way. Because in certain classes with the current curriculum standards, for teachers, there's just no possible way they can get through everything. So at a certain point, no matter how you're performing in the class and the tests that are given on the term you've learned, by the time you get to the test at the end of the year, you're scoring way lower than your average test score in the classrooms. Like, it's not only hurting everybody else in our county.
Like, it's not only hurting everybody else in our county stores, like it's also hurting individual students. Because at the way our schedule is now, the exam is twenty percent of your grade. So, I'll give you an example, last year I took pre-calc. So, by the time I finished pre-calc, I averaged with a ninety-four. And then I did well on all my tests in the classroom. I get to my state exam, cause we didn't have enough time, I make a seventy. And that's way different than what I was seeing in the classroom. So, like with the current curriculum standards, no matter what our teachers do, there's just possibly not enough time for us to learn everything we need to learn and retain everything we're learning. Because there's just not enough time to learn and practice to be completely proficient. So, it's hurting not only like the adults, but also the students who care about what goes on their report card and cares about the material they're learning.
I wonder how that, if it, if it would make things better if we went back to the schedule where we had year-long lasts?
Well, like, I don't know, like, I wasn't at the high school when they had year-long classes. That was like right before I got there. Um, I do like the AP every other day for year-long because it gives you time to do your homeworks. I like the way that schedule's set up. And for certain classes, yes, would a year be way better for pre, like for example, pre-calc, would that be fantastic? But to be honest with you, who wants to be a pre-calculist their whole year? And like, it's, it's not a fun class to be in.
So, it takes you in class, half the school.
Half the school, except for.
Except for AP.
AP is every other day for the whole year.
Yeah, 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 well, that's like, that's like taking the test after summer.
Yes.
And we did AP every other day, cause the literature is quite clear that AP on a four-by-four. It's why school divisions like Charlotte have adopted a four-by-four and very quickly abandoned it. Because, and one of the compelling reasons there was because of poor AP performance when you finish a class in January. And it's cost prohibitive for the college board to prepare two sets of exams. And you have to sit and wait till May. What Charlotte did was they doubled up. And again, the very opportunities that were supposed to increase elective involvement with a four-by-four were now being monopolized by doubling up on calculus and chemistry. And those things where you could not possibly, um, finish in January and then walk into an exam in May and expect to do very well on it.
So, when Ms. Dowdy put in the hybrid schedule two, uh, three years ago, um, I, I, I enjoy scheduling. It was, it's a, I think it's a wonderful schedule because it allows you to have year-longs and double block, and double block classes at the same time. So, no schedule meets all kids. Need nothing, if you do one of everything, that doesn't work. But think about, when you had your science class in biology, it'd be great to have a ninety-minute block so you could finish, start a lab and finish a lab. And you don't need that all year. But math or a foreign language, it'd be great to have that all year long, but it is.
It's great.
It's rough, but, but, but having that math all year long. Whereas a, a language arts could be a double block period and you're okay not having some of that time off. But the, the part of that was your resistance from your staff to that change. And if we, we listen to that, so there's people that didn't like those changes. If we don't, and if we're responsive to people not liking that change that may be really good for kids, then it's gonna be hard to make change that's needed. And so, you know, I, I, I think Ms. Dowdy was spot on when she went to that change. But she covered a lot of grief and I said, I'm gonna speak up on this one for that schedule. Um, which I think is a great opportunity for kids and allows multiple times for kids to take a diverse number of courses without having to run an AP every other day where you can just run it all year long.
So, are you saying that we have faculty members that have not bought into this schedule change?
Oh, that, that was before. That we're running a four-by-four block.
Yeah, it's a standard.
I think master scheduling at a secondary level has become completely an enigma and a puzzle that is so difficult to solve. Because we have dual enrollment, right? We're both in dual enrollment courses. So, they're on semester, I have to play with college rules. You gotta follow their calendar, I've gotta play by their rules on sixty-week courses, eight-week courses, twelve-week courses. So, that's a whole new dynamic that enters the mix for a, a traditional high school schedule. We go back to when we were in school, we had eight periods a day, year-long everything, ran through, through it all like that. And then we switched to a block, a four-by-four block. And there's a happy medium because I, when I looked at it, I was taking our eighth grade kids who are coming out twenty-five percent proficient in math and saying, you've got a semester to get all this material. You've not gotten it for twelve years, leading up to this point, in year-long blocks of time. But I'm gonna throw you in a semester and say, you've gotta get it in a semester. Sounded ludicrous to me. No wonder we were getting, you know, results the way we were. Because we're saying, it's not enough time for you to get that information, you struggle already. So, I think that there's gotta be a happy medium of double blocking, of year-long courses, of meeting individual kids' needs. And that looks crazy. And that is cumbersome and it looks completely different than everything anybody's ever seen. And so, that's what makes it so difficult.
I think when you ask students about the hybrid schedule, the ones that were benefiting from it would be the people who needed the extra support in English and math. And they were in those year-long English and math and things were slowed down for them. And I think it was really beneficial for them. Personally, I was in a course class in a biology class. So, maybe my schedule just didn't take full advantage of that. But that's also because I am proficient in math and I didn't necessarily need that. But I think for kids who need that extra support or the year-long, like push for it, that probably is very successful for them.
So, when did they, excuse me, uh, my kids just recently, you know, got into the middle school. So, I'm not familiar with all this. True. When did we stop teaching my math for a whole year?
You can double back in the eighties.
I know, but.
I mean, really, back in the eighties when we went to a four-by-four.
By the way, stopped that?
When we adopted a four-by-four schedule.
So, you mean to tell me people were taking math the first half of the year? Didn't they have to perform on the test?
They tested at the end of that year.
Just the eighties.
Yeah, what were you touching on?
I'm sorry, I got confused.
With your seventy, your ninety-four and then your seventy-two.
So, so, Ms. Butler, she's my AP calculus teacher now, great teacher. But no matter what she does in the classroom, you're not getting through the curriculum for pre-calc. She hasn't gone through the curriculum, one year she's taught it. And it's just impossible, just because when you're.
Not enough time.
There's not enough time, even with ninety minutes in a day. Because I'm not gonna lie, like when I was younger, I was proficient in math, everything I did. When I got to, and even in my, like, high school math classes, when I got to pre-calculus, that's when I really started having to go home, make sure I did my homework, make sure I judged on the questions that I needed. And when you get in the classroom and the kids are, are having questions, five questions on the homework, that cuts out thirty minutes of your class time already.
So, you can't do your new stuff.
So, you're only having, you're only, you're only having sixty minutes of instructional time, which includes examples. Cause she always does, always does examples with in her notes. And that takes out more time. So, by the time it's over, you don't have time to teach everything. And with that test being twenty percent of your grade, I barely squeezed an A, I ended with a ninety in that class. And like I'm saying is, it's not even a curricular county problem, it's not even a North Carolina problem, it's a national problem. We're so focused on how kids perform on the test and we're not even focused on, did they learn the material that's needed for them to move on? Like she was saying, you're having kids coming out with twenty-five percent. Well, guess what, teachers, because of the no child left behind act that was implemented in two thousand one, you have no op, like teachers are just forced to push them along, which prepares them for failure for the next class and the class after that. So, it's really not fair to the students at all. Especially when you get to some higher level classes where I had to take pre-calc as a prerequisite for AP calc. And now I'm having to fill in the gaps of a class that was last semester, what I only need with this class, two or three times a week. So, it's just, it's, it's hard.
The new tests that you test, they were saying on that test that you had not even been taught.
And, and that's not unusual to get a poor grade on final exam and pull down in last grade.
Yeah, and to pull in something we did in my AP Capstone program, AP seminar a few weeks ago, we had, our first educate, our first topic was educations. We all did a project and my group was on standardized testing. And when you go back and look at all the data and everything, there's just so much pushback from teachers in this country along with parents and students. And it's not something we can fix here, it's not gonna happen, you know?
We can fix Curritown County.
We can fix Curritown County, but it's so miniscule in the hundreds of thousands of schools in the nation.
I, I, I like to fix it, I like what you're saying.
Yeah, it's just so hard. And like, I feel like teachers are trying their best to really help students on the test, but at a certain point, there's nothing you can do. And that's why when I was reading and doing all the research, you come up with a lot of teachers that say they would rather have their counties make the test rather than make the test themselves. Because they know and their counties know exactly what was being taught in that classroom.
Is that an option?
No, there's nothing you can do about that until there's new policy that replaces the other one. There's just nothing that happened.
That's also your opinion.
Well, I'll speak to that, there, there's, there's news, yeah, there's news releases coming out that, uh, more and more states and more and more districts are, are questioning or reviewing standardized testing practices. Um, and the latest thing that I saw that, um, they're up to fifty percent now, fifty percent of colleges and universities don't even ask for the ACT or SAT scores anymore as part of the enrollment process. Uh, because they're, they're only in that in the standardized testing discussion. And so, they're trying to find out, um, the state of North Carolina's proposal that they're trying to move along is, um, quarterly tests or like monthly benchmarking tests rather than one big test at the end of the year. And then you take all those benchmarking assessments as a, as a whole, um, assessment set of data. And then you decide how let students do it. That's something that's being discussed, but it's gotta be okay through the, the federal, um, data management system, which is, uh, the, now the new version, no child left behind, which is called ESSA. It's, uh, you know, every state's gotta get their plan approved to change off of, um, those, uh, those requirements. And so, it's a process that's going on, but I don't know how long it'll be before, um, you know, the standardized testing practice is changed, but it's being discussed.
Yeah, I, I look back at articles from even twenty thirteen where it started being a problem. Because like you said, with the monthly or quarterly test, yeah, that would make more sense. Because if you don't have any time to barely get through your curriculum, how are you gonna have time to review something you learned in the first week of class? You know what I mean? So, it's just hard to not only learn the information, but also retain it by the time they take a test that's twenty percent of your overall grade.
That's, that's tough.
It's tough.
That's tough.
And I think that's why it's, we can look at the test scores and the standard test scores. And I understand it's a big focus, cause we want our county to be proficient, obviously. We want every student here to do the best they can. But, but yeah, like what she said, like why are we defined by number? Why aren't we defined by what our students are taking out of the classroom? You know, and it's just hard as a student to be like, you know, you tried your best, but you didn't meet the proficiency.
And you're working hard.
Yeah, when you go home and you do homework for two hours for a class because you just are trying so hard to understand it. Cause you know you have a quiz or a test the next day and it's just not there and you don't do well. It's just hard, it's a hard pill to swallow, not only for every teacher and every administrator, it's a hard pill to swallow for a student knowing you're trying to make your best and it's still not enough.
So, I think we maintain our educational lobbyists.
Yeah.
I will fully support that.
She's gonna be in Raleigh a lot here, anyway, so unless she's there.
Ninety minutes of math? All year long? All summer long?
I think you just lost some of your followers.
All right, but I do think we should be trying.
And I, and I just caution because I think that time's a good thing, but it really is about the quality of that teacher standing in front of a kid.
I was joking about all that.
Oh, I know, oh, no, I'm not talking about summer. But even, even in those types of settings, it's really about the person that stands in front of those kids. We can put a kid in a class with an inefficient teacher for ninety minutes, for a hundred and twenty minutes. And the outcome will still be the same. It's really about that person that stands in front of those kids.
And we have, we are headed towards a teacher shortage. I mean, we've heard tonight how we're having trouble filling slots with highly qualified teachers.
The report was just released, I was just showing, um, math now, it just came out as we were sitting here and I looked at an email. Um, North Carolina has a decrease of forty-one percent in teacher prep programs, forty-one percent.
And that leads to teaching, like teaching on videos. Like a lot of teachers now, especially in math, they teach through videos. And yes, that's great to get the pre, but what are you supposed to do when you have that for homework? You don't, who's supposed to answer your questions?
Well, and that's another topic, which.
Yeah. It's just.
Homework.
There's so many things connected with getting teachers into the school systems. But look what the state of North Carolina is doing right now, the budget hasn't passed. There's so many things out, so they're jumping to colleges because why? It's sad, I just, my heart breaks.
So, we all go on furlough? Shut down schools?
Which is crazy.
Well.
Okay, thank you so much. You know, great, great.
Thank you.
Stormy session there. Um, budget resolutions for two thousand nineteen, twenty, Ms. Larissa York?
Well, even though their budget hasn't passed, I would like for you to pass. Um, I don't know how much time I have, so I'll try to make some.
Minus three minutes.
I know, okay, okay, okay. So, um, so, so I'm sorry I didn't have the senior packets, but I've handed out two gra, pie graphs for you. Um, one in, uh, one refers to the, um, expenses, use of resources. So, you can see, um, what expenses and how much of our resources they're using. I was gonna go over all that, but I won't. Um, and then there's also the, um, as part, what was in your packet was, uh, I believe that you guys like to see how these schools receive their money. Um, so I have a, uh, chart for you on how, um, I've allotted the money to each school. And, um, that was done per ADM, initial ADM. Um, I know the ADMs have changed, but this, I had a, have a starting point for that. Okay, the other gra, graph is the, uh, it's letting you know where our source of revenues come from. And all of these numbers come from the budget resolution, uh, that was also in your packet. Um, that, uh, tells you the, um, state public school fund, local current expense fund, federal grants fund, Cavillotley fund, school nutrition fund and other local fund. Um, which, uh, equals, uh, forty-five million, four thirty-four, four fifty-five, point nine-three budget. Do you have any questions that I can answer? I know that was terrible, I'm sorry.
So, just, just one, this out, this graph. It shows sources of revenue, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, source of revenue. Total, six percent of our budget?
Yes.
Control on all that. They contribute six percent. And, uh, you know, I was just alluding to they contribute so little, but yet they control so much.
Yes, and, and she was speaking, that's exactly what I was thinking, that's why we have the issues right now.
Sure, all right, so, um, the chart that Janet has, I didn't have it in my packet, but I did see it.
It was all they even.
Yeah, I saw it, it was about this big and I had to pull my glasses on three times.
You had to prove it.
Yeah, but I don't have all that, I, I just worked at that place.
Be careful.
So, um, are these the same numbers of schools break down?
They are not.
First school last year.
They are not, this, uh, what's that?
They look similar, some of them.
This is, these are the numbers that DPI gave us for initially.
But I think what he's asking is, is this the same funding that we did last year pretty much, like?
Yes, it's the same formula, it's the same funding format, yes.
But the numbers aren't exactly.
The numbers are not the same.
They're different.
Well, I'm not real enthused about eighty-five dollars for a school for music course for a year. And I know, that's about a dollar a student.
Do they, do they get music instruction at them, Mr. Goings?
Um.
I know they get art.
They get art, we have teachers who provide.
Teachers.
Teachers who, that have an interest in taking a moment.
But they don't actually have a music class.
The same lady does art, she's gonna get a hundred and thirty-seven for that. For a year, hundred and seventy, thirty, and, and some of these other schools with higher enrollment, they got some.
No, that is the actual music allotment and per ADM, Knott's Island's ADM was seventy-eight.
Yeah, I know.
It's a lot less.
So, we went to this last year and I'm not, look, there's other schools that have a higher enrollment that still have pretty dismal numbers for those things. I'm just using that as a starting talking point. So, I'm, I'm looking at eighty-five and one thirty-seven, music, course and art. I'm going.
What can you do with eighty-five?
With two hundred and what, twenty-five dollars basically, two hundred and twenty-some dollars? What do you do with that for the whole year?
Well, I can tell you that classroom teachers get less than that for the whole year.
All I'm saying is, it's sad and we should do better. We gotta figure out how to move some money around or something, but that's not, that's not good.
I think we gotta increase this part of the pine. This part right here.
Well, I will, I will say, if you increase one part, you have to decrease the other.
Now, I'm saying give a larger amount from one source.
It could be from several sources, all I'm saying is, or it could be, we don't have to always just get a larger amount. We can prioritize our spending. I go to work, people talking about all this, all that, and their fancy car, fancy guy. All I'm saying is, that sucks if you take some amount of money, almost, you know, different being a student. It's not your fault.
I understand, it's not my fault.
I don't wanna go on budgets, it's got that little miniscule number on it.
But I, I would like to tell you though, there are ways that we can manipulate, uh, move, move budget items, move the budget lines. So, if Knott's Island Music Choral needs a hundred and eighty-five, we can make it happen.
It's not just Knott's Island and I don't wanna get fifty more hours. Very long. I think he's not gonna do it. I mean, seriously. They have an art teacher that does music and art.
No, she does not.
He does music as a supplement, primary art. She does some music with kids.
She does it both.
But it's not an art.
It's still two hundred and sixteen dollars, Janet.
I know, it's sad. Did you look at, I, I looked at the field trip allotments, I mean.
I don't even wanna look at that chart anymore.
I won't give it to you next year. So I mean, that's what a principal feels like when they look at it. It is. Trying to figure out how you squeeze blood from a turnip, trying to hit everybody, because you wanna do things, but it, it is, it stinks.
I mean, these, these numbers for field trips, it, all children need to go on field trips. They do need to go on field trips, because it's just good for instruction to reinforce what they learned in their last round.
Go fun.
Yeah, we all need to get all that done.
All right.
All right, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, with that being said, Mr. Golling made, made a comment that he doesn't wanna, you know, hold on a budget that has those miniscule numbers. But as, as I bring in Ms. York's comment, that is a fluid document. And so, so things can move, things can change, and we would bring the revisions to you without a finalized budget, then we really don't have an operational structure to go off of. And the state's gonna provide us enough excitement budget-wise this year with the delay in the state budget. And now, you know, if they're piecemealing things in these mini-bills, then we get a little bit of this and a little bit of that. And so there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of changes anyways, but we have to have the initial structure in place so that we can, we can absorb those changes. And then you'll hear about the changes as we go forward, rather than have an act on the whole budget.
So does that mean all these teachers can come back with a little request, and we can try to see if it's reasonable and monetize that?
Well, they can do that, they can do that inside of a structure that doesn't have to come to the board.
They, they do it now.
They, they can make a request to the principal, and the principal, if they have funds, they can do something. If the principal needs help, they can contact Ms. Dowdy or Dr. Lutz, or me, or Ms. York. And we can, we can see what kind of funding we can pull to help them out. And then if it gets to a point where we need a big budget revision, then that's where you get.
Yeah, this is just the, I had to, I had to start somewhere.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Forty-five million dollars we started with.
I know.
Okay.
I can, I can do the next meeting.
All right, let's do that, and then greenhouse update? I saw Don's email, I guess it was today or yesterday, but Matt, do we have the site cleared?
We can't start anything until the county approves, nothing.
Can you move the trailers?
I can't move the trailers, because I don't know if they're gonna allow me to move the trailer. It's all one big fluid document.
Okay, so I, I mean, it's been a month, and. You were ready, weren't you ready to send the plans at the last meeting?
I, I sent the plans back at the last meeting to the company who designs the greenhouse.
Okay.
And it took them two weeks to get it back to me.
Okay.
And the day that it came back, I had the other two packages prepared to email off, so they're emailing off now.
Right.
I've received no response from anybody yet. I do have pricing for everything, except for, I want two more prices on the site work. And I've spoken to your concrete guy, and he's gonna get back with me, but he hasn't yet.
Okay, now, you're saying it went to two places, it went to the state and the county?
What I typically do is send it to the state, let the state say yes, because it's a legal binding thing, and then send it to the county. I did both at the same time, to save time and stuff.
And I believe you said it typically takes three or so weeks?
It does, but typically the state is sending me emails by now, saying, what about this, what about this, why, why did you do that? I need more information. It's like crickets right now. But I'm doing everything I can to be ready. I know who's gonna move the trailers. I'm pretty close to knowing who's gonna do the site work. The electrical, the electrical, I just have to write the contract, plumbing, I just have to write the contract. But.
She gonna have to make me that kick?
Yeah. I'm doing every, I'm doing everything I can. I'm doing everything I can.
And you said, yes, it will, and I said, no.
Well, I, I was, I was surprised, I was surprised that the greenhouse company didn't get me the engineered drawings back quicker, because he said it was a two or three-day turnaround once I sent it back. They drew it in reverse, and I said, just flip it. And it took about a week and a half. And then I emailed him Sunday night, just to have it ready for him on Monday morning. And he sent it to me Monday morning and said, oh, I have it here. So it's almost like it was sitting in his office. So I've met with three or four different people this week trying to get pricing. One is giving me a price back on the site work.
It sounds like you've got them all wrong.
I'm moving as fast as I can possibly.
Great. All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask that we adjourn the work session.